Hi, join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Wow, it's great to see everybody out tonight. Several years getting to this point with our Sandpiper team. I'm just doing a brief introduction, a couple of the players in here, starting with the executive and/or senior vice president, Steve Thompson. Excited, Steve and I spent many hours over six months working together to get here in Ocean Pines and we appreciate the board supporting that, so excited to have you. And Steve actually was so excited to be here, he raced down from New York. He apparently found his way to the stock exchange and rung the bell. You and a couple of your other teammates rang the bell at the stock exchange yesterday, right? So thanks for coming down to be with us tonight. As you see, the dark blue shirts, they bought all new shirts just come to our meeting. Shane and I spoke about it yesterday, said, "We're gonna have a big crowd, how you gonna separate yourselves?" So we'll buy new shirts. I made sure I wore purple so I didn't match them. I'm gonna introduce Jim Moore, Jim is the vice president. Jim's gonna do, Jim actually and I worked together through this process as well. And I'm gonna let Jim introduce Shane and the rest of the team since I certainly don't know all the Blue Shirt players. So thank you for your patience for the size of the room. We did not anticipate quite this many people, so next time, let us know you're coming out, we'll do it in the gym, okay? Alright, well, thank you all for being here tonight, and Jim, I think it's your, sir.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. Thank you very much. I tell ya, it's, uh, when you guys have a meeting, you have a meeting. No doubt about it. We do appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening. The way we've set the, basically, the agenda up is that we're going to go through just sort of an overview of Sandpiper and the conversion process and speak to some of the specifics related to that as well. Then what we'll do is we'll have breakout sessions for questions. We feel it'd be a lot more efficient and especially now that I see as many people as are here tonight. We have set up tables with basically some subject experts, if you will, to respond to questions. So we have a table that has basically a focus for safety and we have Steve Farkas with that. He is the company's safety director. We have an operations group that includes Ray Fairbank, Josh Denham, Chris Redd. These are guys that are director and manager levels within our supervisor levels as well, within our operations area. We have representatives that will speak specifically to conversions. We have Steve Toll who manages the conversion section. Along with him, we've got Jacques Remmel. Some of you may know Jacques from the Eastern Shore gas. And some of the other guys here as well, John Chuland. Then I think that Jason Newcombe is here. I'm sure you can't see back there too well. But also, we have a sales group that will talk to you about anything that you may have, if you have any interest in. Well, if I have appliances that may, you know, maybe I wanna replace those appliances or something like that. Also, within that sales group is our external affairs. With that, if you have social organizations that you're in and you need speakers, if you'd like to have someone engaged in that, that all goes through this group of folks. Steve Ashcraft is back there, Greg Benston, Jared Shelton, Mike Clemons, who's the sales manager, back there. So we've got representatives in that area. We have a desk as well for customer service. Shirley Coe is back there to answer questions related to billing and things of that nature. And then we also have Matt Evergamm, who is with our regulatory group. So if there are specific questions with regard to regulatory issues, then Matt is well-informed in that area. The, as far as general questions and the overall program, I'm gonna turn it over to Shane Breaky to basically go through the presentation. Shane is the director of energy services for the group. And as the Bob said, Steve is here, I'm here as well for his general questions. But what we'll do is we'll work through the presentation and then we'll move into that breakout session. I think that'll be a lot more efficient. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Shane.
Alright. Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me alright?
Yes.
Thank you so much for turning out en masse. We did not expect this many people. We started with 30 chairs to start off with, but I just kept adding rows. So you're gonna have to bear with us in this crowded environment. I had two goals for tonight, you know, one was that hopefully that there was gonna be nice weather, and the weather's almost too nice, especially when you work for a gas company. And then the other goal was that we were gonna bring more people than you guys were gonna have here. I was hoping we were gonna outnumber you, and we're nowhere close to outnumbering you, so everybody stay calm, alright, please? So anyways, because of the large crowd, and I don't know if you can hear me very well, I'm gonna try to go through this pretty quick. If I start to get long-winded, I'm gonna ask this gentleman right here just to throw something at me or kick me or something like that. But again, I'm Shane Breaky with Chesapeake Utilities and Sandpiper Energy. Been with the company for over 20 years. One of our long-term goals has been to get gas to eastern Sussex County and into Worcester County. And over the 23 years, you know, 15 years ago, we probably didn't think we were gonna be here today. And then over the last eight years, a lot of things have happened to get us here. We're very excited to be here. It's been a long process. I think everybody here has seen kind of how long these things take. Hopefully, you're patient with us. We're here for the long haul, but it's, I think it's to the benefit of everybody here and the community. So with that said, I'm gonna go through the presentation, and I know I'm standing in people's way, so I apologize. Here's our agenda. We're gonna go through the company history for those that don't know about Chesapeake Utilities and Sandpiper Energy. We're gonna talk about safety because safety is always our focus with anything that we do. We talk about safety first. Go over some of the benefits of natural gas, the conversion process. We have about 20 or 30 frequently asked questions that we're gonna go through. Then after that, we're gonna set it up so that hopefully there's gonna be room for everybody to go to their respective areas with their respective questions and get answers that they need. We did hand out, you know, postcards and comment sheets, hopefully. So write down your questions as you're going through tonight and then, you know, take them to whoever, I'll explain who you should take them to for that night. If we can't get to your questions, we do have a comment box over there. You can put them in there and I promise you, we'll get back to you. So who are we? So we, our parent company is Chesapeake Utilities. As Bob had said, you know, our stock symbol is CPK, we're on the New York Stock Exchange. We are excited that it just so happened yesterday, several employees got to go up to New York and ring the closing bell. Our retired CEO and retired board director, chairman of the board, rang the bell for us, and he was probably the person that got us on the New York Stock Exchange back in 93. We are a diversified energy company. We have natural gas distribution, transmission, gathering, processing, and marketing. We also have an electric utility down in our Florida subsidiary. And we also engage in propane gas. Everybody's probably heard of Sharp Gas and wholesale market. We are headquartered on the Delmarva Peninsula. Our headquarters are Dover, Delaware. And we have significant natural gas transmission and distribution facilities on the peninsula. And we'll show this a little bit later, but we have over 450 miles of transmission main on the peninsula and over 1,500 miles of distribution main that all the people you see behind you have to maintain day-to-day. So I apologize if you can't see this. Teresa, hopefully everybody knows Teresa over here. Teresa says that we do have this posted on the Ocean Pines website. And before I go any further and as I bring up Teresa, I would like to commend and thank Teresa for everything she's done. We've only been communicating for probably three or four months now, but she has been terrific to deal with, to the point where we've kind of changed the way we've decided to market our information. At one point, we were thinking about trying to drive everybody here to our website, but it seems like your website's really good and you guys use it quite a bit. So what we're gonna do is flip it around and use your website to push information to. And don't go too far, Bob, I wanted to thank you too.
Now, I just wanna raise this, apparently, some folks in the back. Hit it clear. Famous last words, right?
But Bob, it's been a pleasure to work with too.
A little better?
So everybody can see this? So I'm gonna just kind of skim through this. So on the left side here, this is our footprint for our natural gas distribution systems. So you can see, we're pretty much in all the counties in Delaware and we're also in Worcester, Wycomico, and Dorchester County. And, you know, we just got into this area probably within the last three years. The transmission company, how do we get natural gas down into this area? I don't know, we have another map that we can provide, it's a system map, but there's actually major pipelines that run along the east coast and we tie into that through our Eastern Shore Transmission Company. So there's a major pipeline that comes down the spine of Delmarva, we'll say, and with higher pressure gas, and then we tie into that and bring gas to the residences. But it wasn't until probably the last five years, our transmission line just went straight down 13, in essence. And probably within the last five or seven years, we actually got the transmission line to go down 113, and which now ends north of Berlin, and that's how we're able to bring you the gas. And then on the right-hand side gives you an idea of our propane subsidiary, Sharp Energy, and their footprint, and you can see they're all along throughout the Delmarva Peninsula and into Pennsylvania, and also on the Maryland western shore. So a little bit more about Chesapeake Utilities, our values. You know, we call it our brand DNA. We're out there to aspire and care about our community that we're in. We have a talented workforce of experienced professionals with diverse backgrounds who take pride in their work. As you can see here tonight, it's not uncommon to find somebody within our company that has 20, I have over 20 years' experience, Jim Moore probably has almost 30, Steve Thompson has over 30, and probably the average back there are people that have been with the company for what, over 20 years or so. So, you know, we take pride in this company, in what we do and the services that we provide. And we are committed to meeting the highest standards for our customers and our communities. So I'm gonna get kind of redundant here. So my wife's a schoolteacher, and the one thing she's taught me is that in order to get a message across, you gotta say it three times. So if I'm being redundant, excuse me. If I'm being redundant, excuse me. If I'm being redundant, excuse me. But it actually works. So I'm gonna probably say things over and over again. And I did learn early in my marriage that that's not nagging. It's a teachable moment. So now I have kids and they think I'm nagging them, but it's a teachable moment. So our history, I'm not gonna go through all of those, but the, what I want to convey is that the number here is correct. It is 1859 that we started on this peninsula. So we've been here for 160, I haven't been here. The company's been here for over 160 years, and we plan to be here for another 160. Started off as Dover Gaslight and it's expanded well beyond that. Some of the other highlights, 1980, 1981, we purchased some propane companies, including, at the time, it was Clarity Sharp Company, and then we did change the name to Sharp Gas Incorporated and is doing business with Sharp Energy. 85, we expanded into Florida. And the most significant one for this group is in 2013, we purchased the operating assets of Eastern Shore Gas Company, and now that's operating as Sandpiper.
Quick question, Sharp is part of your family?
Yes, good question, I'm gonna show it. Just look right there.
Know that.
Actually, you could have, you have one slide ahead right there, you could have seen it. So yes, this is our family, right here. So Chesapeake Utilities is our corporate, you know, under this umbrella of Chesapeake Utilities Corporation, and then here's all the business logos of those entities below it. One of the things you'll have to, you know, bear with us, we are going through a transition with our logo. But these are our new logos, you see there's a lot of, you know, similarity between them, that's on purpose. We are transitioning out our old logos, you'll see the ones with the flame and things of that nature, there's, will be gone probably within the next couple of months, and all of our logos will look like this, you know, we're one big happy family. And then, there we are, Sandpiper Energy. So Sandpiper Energy is Chesapeake Utilities doing operations in Worcester County. So the first thing that we always like to discuss, even in our meetings at work, is safety. Safety is first paramount. And I just zip right past it, that's how it works. So safety, it's always our priority. So I'm just gonna go through this, this is some of that redundant stuff you're gonna hear over and over again. So just for informational purposes, call 911, and our phone number is 1-800-427-0015. Call either of those numbers if you have a gas emergency. Other thing to remember is call before you dig. Most of the instances that we have of gas leaks occur when people go out there and think they can put their fence posts in, and then they wind up hitting our gas line. Things of that nature. So it's a free service, call 811 before you ever dig in your yard. They'll be out there within a couple of days, they'll highlight, you know, where all the underground utilities are. It'll save you a lot of peace of mind, save us a lot of peace of mind too. I don't know if anybody here is from the fire company in Ocean Pines, but we do provide free training to them, so anybody would like to have that, Steve Farkas in the back, or we have a couple other people too, can do that. So during the conversion process, one of the things that we're gonna do is if you're a gas customer with us already, we're gonna go into your home and inspect all of your gas appliances, as well as the piping that leads to those gas appliances, so that you can feel secure that your internal gas delivery system will be safe once we complete the conversion. Now, I don't know how many of you built your house or really understand what's going on behind your walls, but this'll give you a little bit of a peace of mind when this process is done, that we've gone in and checked for leaks and we leave there making you feel assured that it's, it's safe. Other things that we do, we are continuously proactive in inspecting our gas lines. We'll be out there in the field doing leak surveys every five years. And we recently completed a leak survey of the entire Ocean Pines area back in December. You probably saw some of our trucks out there digging holes and checking, that's a routine thing where we just gotta go out there and check our system just to see if there's any leaks. And I'm not sure if I'm gonna mention this later, but you gotta remember, and I've seen two different numbers, but there's over, I'm gonna say between 60 and 100 miles of main within this development that we have to manage. So we have to, you know, go out there and check that regularly, and that's a lot. But rest assured, we can do it. Annually, we send out a public awareness brochure to our customers and our non-customers that are within 500 feet of our gas line. And the reason that's important is, you know, we wanna make sure our customers realize that they're safe, but also those that have gas infrastructure on their property and they're not customers. So we send them a brochure also, so that they can go through, and we have them available in the back if you haven't received one in your home already. And it goes through, you know, exactly what we do, what you need to do in a safety instance, and what to look out for, things of that nature. So what are some of the benefits of natural gas? Been a long time coming, so we're finally here. So some of the natural gas benefits. Natural gas is dependable and reliable. There's people that say there's well over 100 years of supply out there. All of our infrastructure, most of our infrastructure is underground, so if there's an ice storm, things of that nature, if there's a lot of snow, you're gonna continue getting gas. It's not a tank, so you're not, the chances of, you're not gonna run out, you know, there's a constant supply. Natural gas is safe. You know, even though I keep talking about safety, please don't leave here thinking it's not safe. It's just something, you know, it's like defensive driving and that kind of stuff, we just need to keep reminding them. It is safe. If there is a leak, natural gas will dissipate into the air, whereas propane will migrate down closer to the floor. Natural gas is domestic, and some, probably most of you know this already, but almost all of the natural gas that's used in the United States comes from North America. And it's been that way for a while, but now with the, you know, the shale gases developed over the last couple of years, it's significant. So what that means is, you know, it's an American product, those are American jobs that come along with that. Center column, natural gas is clean, it has lower emissions than the dirty fossil fuels. A natural gas structure is a CH4, there's only one carbon atom. By displacing dirtier fuels such as coal and fuel oil, natural gas helps to lower the region's carbon footprint and help to address a number of environmental concerns. I'll talk about that real briefly on the next slide, or in a couple of slides. Natural gas is efficient. About 90% of the gas that is produced up in the Marcellus or wherever it is, 90% of it's gonna make it to the end user, whereas with electricity, only 30 to 40% of it actually makes it to the end user. And here on Delaware and Maryland, you gotta remember, a lot of the electric production around here is coal. So a lot of the, probably about 50% of your electricity is actually still coming from coal. So then you couple that with the fact that if it's over in West Virginia at a power plant and it's coal and only 30% of that's actually making it to your residence, that's not that good for the environment. Natural gas is economical, provides economic benefits in the areas in which it serves through jobs, investments, and tax revenues. All of our investments that we put in the ground do count as property, we do pay property taxes on those, so it helps with the community. And the last bullet is price spreads between natural gas and either oil and propane are projected to continue. You've seen where oil has come down significantly, but if you could see where natural gas is, it's, in the summertime, it's almost, I'm not, don't quote me on this, is there a camera on me? But it's, the commodity is almost free, it's a dollar, and it's pretty inexpensive as far as the commodity. And it's, and it, as far as projections, it looks like it's gonna stay low, especially versus the other fuels. So what are some of the environmental benefits of natural gas? So I'll go through this real quick, but, you know, this is, this is your community down here, so, you know, what does it mean when everybody starts to switch over to natural gas? When we brought the pipeline down to Berlin, there were three large customers that switched off of oil, dirty oil, to natural gas. So three large customers, just those three large customers, and this is not residential, large customers. We're displacing over 700 gallons of number two oil annually within this county. And what does that mean? We reduce CO2 by over 1,600 tons per year, just with those three customers. And to put it in perspective, you know, as we've gone into eastern Sussex County, I don't know of any large oil users in south of the canal. We pretty much got them all switched over to natural gas. Just within the last five to seven years, we probably switched over 10 to 15 large oil users to natural gas, and it's equivalent of about 7 million gallons of oil annually that's being displaced with cleaner natural gas. So that's better for the environment, and those people are saving a lot of money too. So just those three customers, the equivalent of taking 275 cars off the road, those oil customers, it would take about 75 truckloads of oil, you know, to deliver to them. Those are no longer necessary, and you gotta remember, those trucks are driving using number two oil, in essence, diesel. So that's good for the environment too. What'll happen when Ocean Pines converts, when we get all 4,000 of our customers and hopefully the rest that aren't customers become customers, switch over? CO2 emissions will be cut by over 2,000 tons per year. This is the equivalent of taking about 350 cars off the road. So, you know, natural gas is cleaner than propane. I'll, can you hold up for one second? I'm hoping I can do this real quick. So here are some of the other benefits. So here's the pricing that you're seeing right now, and you're gonna have to bear with us as far as billing goes, you know, we do know that we bill in a propane CCF, that's something that was carried over from the ESG days, but when we discuss it up here, you know, we like to talk in propane equivalents, and here's what the rates have done in Sandpiper since we acquired ESG back in 2013. So this is $3.22 a gallon equivalent, and right now, a residential heating customer is down to about $2 a gallon equivalent. So just to let everybody know, since I'm thinking about this, when we acquired ESG and merged with them, or whatever you wanna say, back in 2013, the Public Service Commission didn't really know what to do with this, 'cause this is a hybrid entity. It was purchased as a propane company and the plan was to switch it over to natural gas. So the question was, does the Public Service Commission regulate us, or they don't? Well, they do. And so one of the things that they did request for us to do is to come back within 30 months for them to reevaluate our rates. So just over 30 months ago when we acquired, we now have to go back into the Maryland Public Service Commission, open up our books, and they're gonna take a look at our rates to see if they're just, you know, if it's based on the cost of service, and then at the end, they're gonna say, "Well, here's what your rates should be based on what we now know." You will see something in the newspaper for that. There is a public session on March 18th at Stephen Decatur Middle School, and if you guys would like to go there for that, it is an open forum, you can discuss, you know, with them what you, your thoughts on our rates. So what's the process? Hopefully, everybody's had a chance to see this map. I know it's not clear right now. It is on the website. We do have one over there, we have two back there, and at the end, you know, we can walk you around and show you this, but this is what we're gonna be using going forward, and this is what's gonna be updated on Ocean Pines site regularly. This is where we're working and where we plan to work in the near term. It doesn't have our long-term plan, it doesn't show all 8,000 customers, but within the next six months, this is our area of focus. So as you can see, this is, and if you can't tell, if I say this wrong, please don't get that, Beecham Road, right, not Beauchamp or something. Beecham Road up here, we're coming this way and into the Newport section. So we just started this process in January, and, you know, we're just kind of getting the dominoes going at this point. And what we've done is we highlighted our areas and we've put them in numerically within your sections, so we know that you go by like the Newport section and the Teal Bay section, and we're calling our conversion areas, areas. So right now, we are, we are just into this area right here, and I'll talk about it a little bit more in just a second. But the one thing, you know, we wanna convey is that, you know, again, we're here for the long haul, we wanna do this as quickly as possible, but we're always gonna put safety first, so safety is always first. So what is the process? So again, this is out there on the website. This is gonna go step by step as to what the process is. So the first thing that happens is a postcard is sent to the next area that we plan to convert. So really, no one here needs to worry about anything until they look on that map, see that their area's coming up, and wait for that postcard. If they don't get the postcard somewhat soon, we have a phone number for you to call. So that postcard starts it. Here's a, I got another slide with this postcard, later we can show you. They are sent out approximately four to six weeks in advance of the conversion. While that's going on, what we'll do, and this is a, this is a very detailed process, so you're gonna have to bear with me for one second. We will go out there and we'll install valves within the system to make sure that, you know, the propane doesn't remix with the natural gas and vice versa. So we'll, we'll sectionalize the system to prepare it, so you won't see that part. We will go out there and we'll set temporary propane tanks. So you can see there's a picture over here of what it's gonna look like. What we're doing is we're taking you off our underground pipe propane system and we're gonna put you on a tank so that you can still get service, but that'll allow us to continue to do maintenance on the underground infrastructure. So the temporary tanks are set within one to two weeks of the postcards being sent, and they will be removed once the conversion process is complete. So they are temporary propane tanks. We will move them as quick as we can, we want to remove them, trust us, 'cause we wanna get to the next section, and we don't wanna keep buying more tanks. So gas lines are purged of remaining propane. So what is a purging process? Some of you may have seen it this week, we did purge just down the road here. I don't know if you can see these pictures over here, but you can see a yellow flame. What we're doing there is we're removing the propane from the system. So if we can't, on a day when it's 65 degrees and nobody's using keys for their house, we have to burn it off, and that's what it looks like. The one thing, and I'm probably wrong here, but the one thing that can convey is, you notice it's a bright yellow flame, and that's propane. When you get natural gas appliances, it should be a nice blue flame, it shouldn't be yellow. Meter bars and meter stops are installed at that point too. So here's, here's a big visual of that postcard. So here's, here's a big visual of that postcard. And the most important thing here is this postcard is going to go to you, and it's going to say, we are going to be going to your street within this time period. And what we're going to be doing, our conversion team, is we're going to go in door to door if you're home. And if you're home, we will come in and we'll take a look at each of your appliances. We'll write down, you know, all the serial manufacturing numbers of those appliances, and so that we can get the parts to convert them. If you're not home, or you don't think you're going to be home, you can still call us at our conversion number down here, eight five five two nine zero nine six two eight, so you can, so you can schedule for them to come into your home.
Did I hear you correctly? You guys are responsible for things that we use, roll, so all that?
I'll let you talk, I'm not a specialist with a lot of that, so I'll have to have you. There's a lot of the exterior appliances, we will not convert, it's just the interior ones. So this is the postcard that you're going to get.
How about the people that don't think they're...
Pardon me?
How about people don't think they're...
Right, so we'll, we'll talk about that. So we've got frequently asked questions at the end, and, and that's one of the things that we really... So we're three months into a four-year process. Please bear with us, there are some growing pains for us too. We want to set up, you know, the process to communicate as much as possible. For the people that don't live here year-round, we're going to work with you and Ocean Pines to figure out how we can make this happen. But it is a process, and it's going to keep going. So when they're, when we're in there doing the appliance surveys, that begins one to two weeks after the postcard is sent. Like I said, the dates are on there, and I already went through and described what the conversion coordinator will do. So during that point, our lines, after our lines are fully purged of propane, there's no propane in there, we will begin flowing natural gas into the main. So this is just outside the home, we're going to put gas into the main. This occurs approximately one week prior to we actually physically go in and convert your appliances.
Question, what's the price for the homeowner to change the appliance? So if I have a propane-y system, do I have to, is there a cost involved?
So the question is, is there a cost involved? So again, we got questions at the end, I'll be able to get to that one too. So, so at the end, we got, we got that. So you're going to have to bear with me, because I know everybody's got a lot of questions. If you want, I'll just cut to the frequently asked questions. But I'd like to kind of go through this process so that everybody gets an understanding of what we have to go through and what you guys do. So we will go out there, after we've introduced natural gas into the system, we will go out there and do a leak survey of all the mains. So we've brought natural gas into the gas lines, and we're going to go out there and walk the line to see if there's any leaks. In the best interest of everybody, safety is always first. So once the distribution system is fully transitioned to natural gas, a conversion coordinator will call each customer to schedule the conversion. So the conversion coordinator's already been in your home, built that relationship, got your contact information. They will call you specifically and schedule that date of when the conversion is going to take place. Down here in green, those are door hangers we may leave if we've been to your home and we didn't get a response. So this is a visual of that. So what happens the day of the conversion? So we have natural gas in the gas lines up to the home. Now we're ready to start converting within the homes. So, you know, it's all been scheduled. Conversion team's been communicating with you throughout this process. We're going to go in there and pressure test all of your internal fuel lines to make sure they're safe. We're going to tie in the meter to the fuel line. And at the same time, we are going to be switching out the meters. The meters right now are designed for propane. We will be putting meters on there. On the meters, there is going to be a device on there that allows us to read the meter remotely. And when I say remotely, it only means from the street. These are not smart readers meters at all. They're what we like to call not dumb meters. So all they do is allow us to read the meter from the street so that we're not in there, you know, walking on your yard or anything like that. So then we do the appliance conversions in this column, middle one. We need to go into your home, so for every gas appliance, we have to install a step-down regulator. And that's because the gas that's being introduced into your home is at, is around two PSI. And that's standard for, for this county. But most appliances operate at a, at a pressure below two PSI, probably a seven inch or a quarter pound. So regulators will be installed. We will convert or replace the appliances as necessary. So if our conversion person has gone in there and said, all right, here's the ones we can convert. We can't convert this one, we will replace it. And we'll talk about, you know, how that happened. And this will all be communicated to you. So what are the final stages? So then the natural gas is coming into the house to the regulators. We'll do a leak test at that point again to see if there's any leaks within the home. And then we'll test fire all of the appliances. If any appliances were replaced, our conversion coordinator can explain the, the operation of the new appliance. And, and something I didn't mention earlier is, you know, we've been in Worcester County for two years. We've done twenty-five hundred conversions already. So the process is getting smoother and smoother, you know, the purchasing of equipment, getting everything coordinated. So it's, it's a good time for us to be into your development. So it's not like we're new to this. We have been doing it for a couple of years. It was a little bit different, you know, dealing with a town of Berlin versus a community of Ocean Pines. But we're looking forward to this. So after the conversion, what happens? So you know, we've already got the gas in, we've tested your appliances, we have you feeling comfortable. The temporary tanks will be removed. The conversion of this area is complete. Sandpiper moves to the next area for conversion, and the conversion tech says, oh, three thousand eight hundred and ninety more to do after this. So, so we'll be moving to the next one. You will get a bill, of course, we are a utility, but you will get a bill afterwards, just as you normally will. The only thing that's going to be different is that the units on there, the bill's going to look exactly the same, but the units are going to be in natural gas CCF versus what they were before, which was propane CCF. And then the rate that you're billed at is changed at a exact same percentage. So in essence, your billing is not going to go down immediately as you convert, should still be the same. And if there are any convert concerns at any point, you can call the conversion coordinator at the eight five five two nine zero nine six two eight. Probably should have put in some extra money to get like a catchy phone number. I say it so many times, so, but that's the phone number, doesn't really seem to yet. So, but if there are any concerns, just call that number. So here's, so thanks for bearing with me. So here are some of the questions that we've seen already. Going to go through these real quick. Once we're done with the questions, what I'd like to do is kind of open it up so that we can go to the exteriors. We'll have to probably remove some chairs so that you can go to the respective groups, but I'll lead you into that in just a second. So what's always our priority?
Safety.
Thank you. So this is a general one. So what does natural gas smell like? Who said that? I should get you something. I wish I had something to get you. I have a battery. So yes, smells like rotten eggs. Natural gas is odorless by nature, and for safety's sake, an odorant called the Captain is added so you'll know it's natural gas. If you ever detect a rotten egg smell in or near your home and you think it's natural gas and not somebody else in the house, place a distance, bring it outside, please follow the recommended safety precautions. So what are those safety precautions? Do leave your home or building immediately. Do immediately call your local emergency number as before, it's one eight hundred four two seven zero zero one five, or nine one one, from a cell phone outside from the home or building, or from a neighboring location to immediately report the suspected gas leak. The reason we want you outside and away from your home is because we don't want to spark. Because we don't want you to use your telephone, turn on or off any light switches, light the match, or do anything that might create a spark within the home. So just leave the home and contact somebody. Do not re-enter the building where the leak is suspected until emergency professionals give the okay. What are signs of a gas leak? So if you're walking around, our meter readers and our meter techs and all of our field personnel are trained on this. But possible signs of a leak around the pipeline are dead or discolored vegetation amid healthy plants, bubbles coming from bodies, or pools of water, or dirt blowing in the air. So this kind of leads into the next section. So if anybody has any questions regarding safety or operations, I'm going to draw your attention back there. You don't have to leave yet, but we have Steve Barkus. Steve, I'd like you to wave. He's over on the left side over there. He's our safety corner. We have Josh Denham on that side. So if you have any questions regarding safety, operations, there they are over there. They're the professionals on that. Billing, so let's go through some of the billing questions you may have. One of the questions is, do you have a budget plan or a direct debit plan? We do. We offer a budget plan and a direct debit plan. You can talk to our customer reps in the back about those. Budget plan, you can sign up after May. I strongly recommend it. It levels the, the billing for the winter period. Anybody that's on the budget plan right now will probably be getting a pretty nice credit because the budget was based on a normal winter as far as temperature, and this was not a normal winter. And then also, our rates have gone down with it. So, you know, feel free to call our customer service number or speak to somebody in the back, and I'll introduce you to them in a second. In January, my rate class recently changed. Why? In January, everybody here should have received a letter saying that we have changed the rate classifications. And hopefully, the letter explained it well. If not, I'm going to try to explain it in this very small paragraph. But what we did was, for our residential customers, when we first, when we, you know, acquired ESG, they had one rate for the residential class, and we carried that over. What we found over time was it wasn't matching what was happening in the market. So everybody was paying the same rate, no matter how much you used. So in the propane market, those that use a lot of gas have a lower rate. Those that use little gas have a higher rate. So we changed our rates to match similarly what the propane market is doing already. So we created three rate classes based on your historical usage.
The federal government would flip out.
So this was approved by the state government, the Maryland Public Service Commission. And when it was approved, we see no positive impact from this. This was a neutral filing. So Sandpiper receives no additional margins. In fact, we probably lost money because we did it in January when usage is at its highest. So those customers that were using a lot of gas went to a lower rate during a month when they were normally paying a higher rate. And it all works out in a twelve-month period, but it was approved by the PSC, and it's a neutral thing, and it's very similar to what the propane companies do right now. So the last bullet there is, you know, we're not making any extra money due to this rate classification. Will the conversion to natural gas have an immediate impact on my bill? So you will not see an immediate impact on your bill when you switch to natural gas because you almost have to think of this as one big system. And right now, we've only, we have a little bit over ten thousand customers. We've converted twenty-five hundred customers. So we have twenty-five hundred customers on natural gas and the seventy-five hundred that are on propane. So when you blend that together, we still have, you know, seventy-five percent of our commodity is based on propane pricing. So right now, it's not going to impact your bill immediately. But when we start getting over the fifty percent range, we have fifty percent of our customers are on natural gas, and that blended rate is mostly natural gas, your rates will, you'll start to see a change in that size as far as your commodity goes. I know someone having difficulties paying the bill, does the company offer assistance? So yes, we do. We have a nonprofit that we set up almost thirty years ago. It's called our Sharing Program. It's a five oh one C three, been going on to donate to it. But what it does is it allows us to, you know, give money back to the community for those that are in need. So if you're elderly, disabled, lived on a fixed income, or have a severe illness, the Sharing Program can give you grants of up to four hundred dollars to help you with your energy bills. You know, and we also have special grants out there. So like if you're on life support or things of that nature, we have grants of up to a thousand dollars to go towards a backup generator when you need electricity as a backup. So we have things of that nature. The funding from the, for this program comes from donations, comes from Chesapeake utilities, comes from the employees, things of that nature. And we probably give out around fifty thousand dollars a year in grants to our customers. Anything that we can do. And if, if that's not enough, the state of Maryland does also have a program out there called the Maryland Energy Assistance Program, and you can always talk to our customer service group for that. And we've got, I mean, we've got people that, you know, in times of need, really need a lot of help. And, you know, Sharing can provide four hundred dollars, and MEAT can provide four hundred dollars. Eight hundred dollars goes a long way. So as far as billing goes, if you have any questions regarding that, about that letter that was sent out in January, anything of that nature, we have just two people back there, but we'll try to help them. I'll, I'll go over there and help them afterwards. But Shirley Coke is back there, she's hiding, and Matt Evernham is back there. So if you have any questions regarding those, you know, they'll be able to answer those questions. And again, if we can't get to your questions, write them down on the comment sheet, put them in the comment box. Make sure you put your name on there and return information so that we can get back to you, and we will. So frequently asked questions regarding conversions. What do I need to do? That's the big question out there. Really, the most significant thing that you need to do is communicate with us and be available. Those are the two things. Really, we just need to go into your home, and I'm probably simplifying, but those two times, to check what appliances you have so that we can see what it's going to take to get those appliances converted, and then later on, get into that house so that we can make that conversion or change out your appliances. So those are the big things. You know, there's no money needed from you upfront for this process. You know, this is all built into our structure, so it's a domino. We're trying to keep things moving, but those are the only things that you need to do. We don't have anything to sign. I mean, this is, this is it. So just make yourself available for those two meetings, and then conversion group will be able to explain a little bit more beyond that. You know, I may want to change that or upgrade my water heater or other appliance, but your conversion coordinator should help with that. Now, while our primary goal during this process is to convert your existing appliances, we will be more than willing to discuss upgrading any appliances with. So again, just communicate with our conversion. Please contact your conversion coordinator, discuss any potential appliance upgrades. And I already mentioned this. So who pays for the conversion of appliances and piping inside my home or business? So we will pay for it upfront. Sandpiper Energy will pay for the contract and materials that are needed to convert or replace your standard appliances. Those costs are then collected through rates from all the customers. So when you see your bill and there's something on there that says SIR, the system improvement rate, that's where it rolls into over time.
Will we know in advance what those rates are?
Yes. Okay. We have to follow this. So what if there are delays in the conversion process? So during the initial survey process, Sandpiper Energy will make every attempt to check everything on all of your appliances and gas piping. If an issue arises during the conversion, we'll make every effort to rectify the problem as soon as possible. We have a proven track record in providing customers with smart and safe energy solutions. So if you have questions in more detail regarding the conversion process, there's a lot of these guys here. So you'll see in the back, we have Steve Toll, they're back in the center. He's here with his team, Steve's leader. Got Jason Newcomb, Robbie West, John Schulman, and Josh Rommel. If you have any questions regarding conversions, they're the men to see right back there. And these are the guys you're going to see within your community for the next three, four, five years. You're going to see them too much probably. But, you know, so they're going to be actively involved with, you're going to, each one of you is going to meet them somewhere in this process. I guarantee that.
What about, if you have a tank already now?
So let me, let me just finish this real quick. So almost done, almost done. I promise.
Do you have any questions?
Yep, so let me just finish up here. So as far as the sales go, if anybody, this is just kind of a, one broad thing. I represent an organization, and we are looking for speakers or sponsors. Who can I talk to? You can talk to anybody over there in our sales team, you can talk to me. We are part of the community. You're going to see a lot of us. So if you belong to a nonprofit, if you belong to, you know, we're a part of the chamber, you know, things of that nature. If you're sponsoring a 5K or things of that nature, come talk to us. We actively participate in all of those things, and we like to be more active than that. And currently, if I'm not a customer, what do I need to do to become a customer? Just contact, just contact our sales team. They'll be happy. I mean, probably half the individuals within this community are not on our system, and we'd be happy... And we'd be happy to discuss, you know, having them switch to our system. It helps everybody overall. It'll help keep the rates down overall as we start to spread those costs out. So if you have any questions about sponsorships, things of that nature, or if you'd like to become a customer, you can see Steve Ashcrafts in the back over here, Mike Cleveland's and his team. There's Jared and Greg Denson back there. They'll be more than happy to answer your questions regarding that. Now, I know a lot of you have individual questions. Ma'am, I'm sorry I cut you off. I'll be happy to come over there and talk to you after this. But what we'd like to do is, you know, not just open it up, cause it's, there's a lot of it.
Why not? Because we all have the same questions.
I, I don't know if we have the same questions, but we have a So what I would like to recommend is that you find your respective group. Anybody that's wearing a blue shirt and a name tag will be happy to answer your questions. And again, we'll be here for the long haul.
I have a general question. I think everybody ought to hear. Sure.
Go ahead, sorry. I will let
It sounds to me like other than the ransom to get the privilege of doing this as a community, the immediate economic benefits for the United States are a long way off other than having 350 cars and food because of cleaner air. Is that it? When are we gonna see a lower bill?
It'll happen as, as we start to
That's not what it sounded like. I'll bet you, I'll bet you right there. We'll be ever seeing.